Call to meeting orders of the April 19, 2021, Wilson County Commission Meeting Order. Welcome all of our guests tonight and thank you for being a part of tonight's meeting. We'll tell you that was handed by the Wilson County Planner that if you're here to speak on behalf of the 2525 Lone Oak Road rezoning or the 3307 Hunter's Point Pike, those both rezonings have been withdrawn by the applicant, so they will not be heard tonight. So if you're here for those and hadn't got that word, then you may leave if you'd like to leave. Again, welcome our guests and encourage you to come back at any time that you can. At this time, I'll introduce Commissioner Bernard for our prayer and pledge and ask all of you to rise.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to invite my friend here, Eddie Poole, up to say the prayer. He's a Realtor in Matt Gieda Keller-Wilde Williams Realty. And Eddie?
Sure. Could you pray with me, please? Father, we just thank you, Lord, for the opportunity, the blessing, Lord, that we have to live in this awesome, awesome country. And God, I thank you that I grew up here in Wilson County, Lord, and I thank you for the blessing that Wilson County is on our lives too, Lord. Thank you for the Girls Blue Devils basketball team, Lord, for their success recently, the FFA Girls from Green Hill, God, the Wrestler that had the success in the state and Lebanon and both Green Hills, God. Just thank you, Lord, for all the blessings that we have here in Wilson County. Father, we pray, Lord, for the meeting now. Father, I pray that you just be with each commissioner. God, I pray that you just, James 1:5 says that if we lack wisdom, that you'll give it to us if we ask. So, God, we're asking for wisdom on their behalf, Father. We pray, Lord, that they'll be able to see things clearly and discern what's right and what's maybe the direction to go or not to go. Father, I pray, Lord, that you be with everybody in here, Lord, with their business lives, their family lives, Father, whatever it is that they need. If, Father, they need more peace in those areas, Lord, if they need more wisdom, if they need more love, whatever they need, Father, I pray, Lord, that they look to you. And, Father, I know that they'll find it. God, thank you for the opportunity to be able to lead in prayer tonight, Lord. It's in your son's name we pray. Amen.
Also want to join me in doing the pledge for the flag.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Poole, for being here tonight. This time, I'd ask you to press yes on your panel to record your presence at tonight's meeting. Joining us by video is Commissioner Fields. And I believe we have 100% for the rest of them there. 25-0, full house tonight. Historia moment, I don't think we have that tonight. And we'll move forward now with a report from the Steering Committee. Commissioner Patton.
Yes, the Steering Committee met Thursday, April 8th, in the commission room in the longest meeting in history, thanks to Mr. Rich and Mr. McFarland. The minutes are in your packet. There would be one change that needs to be made in those minutes. Motion was seconded by, a motion was seconded by Commissioner Jones, who's not on that committee at all. So, but...
We would have to amend that.
So he called me to say, "I didn't do that."
He feels the authority.
All right, so what do we do now?
Michael makes that change.
Okay.
So I'll ask for a motion to approve those as amended.
Say your prayer.
Second, all in favor, say aye. Opposed?
Don't keep me in suspense. Who did this?
Mr. Gentry suggested.
Mr. Gentry.
She lost me in the first five words. I don't know.
Now we'll move on with the adoption of the agenda.
Adoption of the consent agenda?
Just adoption of the agenda.
I need a motion for adoption of the agenda.
Motion.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Consent agenda now?
Yes, motion for adoption of the consent agenda.
We do have two of them there, and we will need to do a roll call vote for those. So, Ms. Doughty will have that up for us in just a second. Resolution 21-4-1 and 21-4-2. You are ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with how you voted? Commissioner Fields, how do you vote?
Aye.
25-0 on the consent agenda, resolution passes and we'll move on. This time, we do have a public hearing. I'll introduce Commissioner Tom Schures, I mean, Mr. Tom Schures, sorry, Wilson County Planner, to lead that discussion.
As the mayor mentioned, we did have two rezoning requests that have been withdrawn from the agenda. One of those is 2525 Lone Oak Road. They were, that was withdrawn by the applicant. The other one is for Mr. Cody Joe Haynes, who had property on Hunter's Point Pike, 3307 Hunter's Point Pike. Those have been withdrawn from the agenda and we will not be holding public hearings for those. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing will be held before the Wilson County Commission on Monday, April 19, 2021, at 7:00 p.m. or thereafter in the county commission room of the Wilson County Courthouse, located at 228 East Main Street in Lebanon, Tennessee. Items for consideration are as follows. An application has been made by Joe Haddix of Civil Site Design Group, representing property owner Wayne Wright, who is requesting to rezone their property from A1 agricultural to R1 with a planned unit development overlay. So that's rural residential zone district with a planned unit development overlay. The property contains approximately 171.73 acres and is located on Zachary Road, Vesta Road, and Murphysboro Road, and Old Murphysboro Road, and is referenced as Wilson County Property Map 142, parcel six, and parcel 30. This rezoning request has been on file and been in the, for record, in the planning office here at the courthouse and has been available for review. Anyone wishing to speak is requested to come forward at this time.
At this time, before we start, I'd like to have a motion for us to go out of session.
Motion.
Second, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? And now, if you're wishing to speak, please step to the mic in the back, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Danny Connor, and I live at 803 Vesta Road. I have a few concerns, ladies and gentlemen. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Danny Connor, as I've said, at 803 Vesta Road. I would like to give you a brief background of myself and my family. I moved here, can you hear me all right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. I moved here three years ago from Fort Lauderdale, Florida, as I retired from the city. We were working, looking for a country property and decided on Wilson County and purchased 4.5 acres on Vesta Road. My daughter and her husband have an 18-month-old son and built a house on the back property last year. The reason I bought this property is the zoning of A1. So I assumed all my neighbors would be building their homes under the same zoning laws. If I knew it was so easy for someone to come in the neighborhood and change the rules from nice acre lots with beautiful homes to postage-stamped lots with small two-story boxes, I would have chose somewhere else to buy and build my dream house, because this is my last hurrah. All surrounding neighbors are very worried about flooding, as I am. From the back of Wayne Wright property to Vesta Road is about 100-foot drop. I can't imagine it not flooding with only 30% saturation on 258 lots. I mean, I don't know, but that doesn't sound good to me. But if we were still A1 and these lots were more like 120 lots, we'd have a lot more saturation and I doubt if we'd have any flooding. I have an 18-year-old, 18-month-old grandson, and I wanted to have a property that he could play safe on as he grows up. He would be much safer with traffic from 120 houses than 258 houses. The property that we're talking about dumps out right in front of my house. So there's going to be cars, cars, cars. A question to this commission. Why would you approve zoning change from A1 to R1 PUD? Is it more taxes? I would think if these lots were acre lots, the houses would be much larger and create almost the same tax base. Why would this commission, elected by the people, go against the people so Mr. Wright can make a few more bucks on his property? That doesn't seem fair to me. Does that seem fair to you folks? Thank you very much for listening to me, and please keep me in mind and keep us in A1. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on the property?
Hi, my name's Sue Schock. I live at 429 Vesta Road. We get a lot of water dumped on us and we have great concerns that the additional homes that would be put in by the R1 zoning is going to create a lot of runoff. I personally would prefer A1, but if something like this does go through, I would really like to make a suggestion that they can retain their water on their side of the property and keep it on their property so we don't get flooded on the other side of the road. My other concern is traffic. We have got terrible traffic going from Murphysboro Road over to 840. We have large trucks that are coming by all the time. Speed limit is not adhered to, and I'm concerned with the amount of homes going in there that the traffic is just going to be overwhelming. I'm wondering if the county is planning on widening the road to deal with the amount of traffic that'll be coming on and off from Murphysboro, Murphysboro Road to 840. So I would like to see it not go on. 170 homes or whatever the A1 zoning is going to be is quite a lot, and I think we'll have problems with that, so I would prefer if we didn't change the zoning. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't do this very often, but I'm kind of passionate about this, okay? My name is Janelle Brotman. I am actually at 670 Vesta, which this property is going to be to the left of it. So I will be really affected by this. Doing the A1 slash houses will be much better. So first off, flooding. I know I've sent pictures in. Every time it floods, I get it from everybody's yards. Everybody. I am a pool. It goes from one side to the next. I can't get out of my driveway. So who's to say that these 225 houses won't flood my house like it is McQuarrie and Vesta? That poor man lost his house several times. It's almost got to my garage. So who can verify, who can tell me that my house will not be destroyed by these houses being right there? I've worked eight years to get to this house. I'm a single mom of four kids. Eight years it took me to get this. I'm very proud of my house. I love my house. I love my yard. My dogs can go play. I won't have to worry about it. Next thing is I have a dry creek bed in between this property and my property. What's going to happen to that? I mean, and there's a whole bunch of trees. I don't want my trees cut down. I don't want anybody coming to my property, because that's mine. I am working hard for that. I, you know, I teach my kids how to work, how to pay, and how to be proud of something. The next thing is school. Of course, I got two out of school and two in school. I have a south, one that goes to South Side, and I have another one that goes to Wilson County, Wilson Central. So my daughter has 20, 25, 30 kids in each class. She's a sophomore. My other one is a fourth grader and he, I think he's 25, 26 in his. So say we're having 225 houses. How many kids is that? I know their buses are already god awful. Poor Tanya, their bus driver, is amazing, but how are we going to supplement all those kids? Where are they going to go to school? How's that going to affect my kids and the kids around me? Those poor teachers are going to have to continue to educate another five or six in the classroom. It's not possible. We keep on trying to build, build, build. I understand there's change, there is, but come on. I don't need 225 houses right next to me. 100, what is it, 75 or whatnot? It's bad enough. The next one is, she talked about traffic again. Have you ever tried to get on Murphysboro Road in the morning or get on 840 going towards Murphysboro? I tell you, I have. It stinks. Have you tried to get off 840 to get onto Vesta? It stinks. It's hard. You sit there forever trying to get through with all the tractor trailers. It's horrible. So those are the things that I have, that I wanted to say. I am passionate about this. I guess, I get change. I get someone wants to sell their land. I get it's private property. I get what they want, but please, for the love of God, don't vote for 225 houses. Don't vote to get, I mean, I want the water fixed before they even start building this stuff. I don't want to lose my house because of a flood, because someone wants to sell their land and build. There has to be some kind of recourse for this. That's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else before we close public comment? Seeing none? Oh, okay.
I'm Wayne Wright, the owner of the property in question. I've owned it for 30-something years. As with everything else, as time goes on, things change. Seems like the major concern of these neighbors, and I respect their concerns, is the flooding problem. There is no flooding problem on that property. There is no creeks, springs, problems on it. These developers educated me on something. The farm I live on has 30-something sinkholes. The farm we're talking about has five sinkholes. I thought that was a negative. No, that gets rid of runoff, so you don't have a flooding problem. The water goes underground. They're concerned about the flooding on Vesta Road. That's Hurricane or Hurricane, whatever you call it, Creek, which starts up about no rain, increases in size as it comes down the hills from no rain. That has nothing to do with this property. It's nowhere near this property. So flooding is no concern whatsoever, so they shouldn't be worried about that. Traffic, it's going to increase. I don't care what direction you go in. They built 840 across the farm I live on. I don't like it, but it's the facts of life. So as I said, the planning commission, I'm not as young as I used to be, and my wife's in the rest home. I need $10,000 a month. They are a bitch. Thank you.
Anyone else before we close public comment? Time we'll close. Tom, do you have anything else that you need to bring up?
I do have a, well, not on this.
Not this one?
I've got a zoning amendment I need to do a public hearing on.
Okay, so we'll do that one now while we're, yeah, let's do that one now?
Okay. We do have one resolution amending the Wilson County zoning ordinance requiring additional fees for applicant deferral requests beyond one instance. Given, this is, it's on your desk. It was deferred from last month because we were unable to get it advertised adequately to meet time requirements. Effectively, what this does is establish a deferral fee for anyone wishing to defer beyond one grace deferral, if you will. Certainly, everybody has things that happen. Kids get sick, injuries happen, car wrecks happen, medical issues happen. Sometimes you're just inextricably not able to get to a meeting at an appointed date. So we're willing to give an applicant one deferral request without additional charge. But what we've run into this year is a spate of applicants that apply and get into the process and realize they need to change some things or whatever, and they defer, and then they may defer a second time. And once they do that, we have to pay re-advertising costs in many cases, particularly on a rezoning or on Board of Zoning Appeals cases. So what this is doing is just effectively establishing a policy by which we would charge them some nominal fee to at least try to cover some of the additional advertisement cost and processing that takes place. So that's what the amendment is about, and every amendment to the zoning ordinance does require a public hearing, so anyone wishing to speak about that can come forward at this time.
Anyone here wishing to speak on the additional charge of $150 on an additional deferral? Seeing no public comment, then we'll close public comment. We will not go back into session, though. We will address this item, because it was not in the packet, and therefore, we need to do it while the, while we're suspended, the rules are suspended. So...
Make a motion to approve.
Got a motion to second? I can do a voice vote, or is a $150 charge?
You need to roll call.
Okay, so if we could roll call this one, Ms. Doughty? Got a motion to second to add $150 if you have an additional deferral, as the resolution reads. So if you're in favor of that, then you would vote yes. If you're not, you would vote no, and you can vote at this time.
It will have the same ordinance number as it had last month? Oh, different ordinance?
Could there be any changes to this?
Mr. Gentry?
I was wondering, could there be exceptions to this policy in the future if, for other circumstances, other than just wanting to defer it? Would you have any, would you have any leadway to make an exception?
Well, certainly, if the, if the board that is serving the public, the Planning Commission, the Board of Zoning Appeals, or the County Commission chooses to defer something from their end of the table, that's not going to be penalized against the developer or the applicant.
I'm just thinking, if there's a family emergency or something like that, is there any leadway? That's all I'm saying. Is it, is it just...
I mean, we're human beings. We'll do our best to be understanding. It's just, you, we ran out of advertising money half...
I understand that. I understand that.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all my questions.
You could vote, please. Would you vote on your panel?
Oh, sure.
All hearts and minds good with your vote? Mr. Fields, how'd you vote?
So did I.
Please record. 25-0, resolution passes. Now we need a motion to go back into session.
Motion.
Second. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay. Mr. Tom, I'll let you take over.
Mr. Chairman, we do have one item that remains on the agenda for rezoning consideration. It is the application made on behalf of Wayne Wright, the owner of property at map 142, parcel six, and parcel 30, located on Zachary Road, Vesta Road, and Murphysboro Road, and consisting of 171.73 acres. This does come to you with a master plan. I should mention, the master plan, each of you have one on your desk. The master plan has some specific requirements, or the PUD, the Planned Unit Development Ordinance, has some specific requirements, one of which, the minimum square footage on these homes will be 2,000 square feet of heated space. This project, in terms of infrastructure, going forward, on behalf of the county, this proposal does propose to commit approximately two acres of land at or near Murphysboro Road and Old Murphysboro Road on the property. Could be used for some form of infrastructure in the county. Could be, could be a future fire station location. It could be a convenience center location. It could be something that the county needs for, for public service. That's one of the good things about the Planning Unit Development Ordinance, is it does allow for commitments such as that to be made. The applicant is also, this rezoning request did fall out of any of our ISO response zones with Wilson County Emergency Management, and as such, when I say falls outside, it's a, it's at least five acres or more, or, excuse me, five miles or more from the nearest fire station at present. As a result of that, the applicant has agreed to sprinkler all of the homes that will be going into this development to help with fire suppression so that, to account for, I guess, the long distance at presence that it may take for a fire truck to arrive. Not that our response times are bad. We have one of the better WEMA, or Emergency Management Agencies in the county, and they do a great job, but anytime you're more than five miles away, it takes a little time to get there. So the current zoning does allow approximately 140 lots, if my math is correct. They are, they could get as many under the planned unit development as 258 lots. They are proposing 222 lots, which is more really in keeping with what they would be allowed if they had just applied for straight R1 zoning. In terms of the road network, when we reviewed this, if I can get my phone to work, one of the things that we did go out and look at was the adequacy of the road infrastructure. Relatively speaking, Vesta Road is one of our wider county roads that we have out in the county. Vesta Road is anywhere from, I think the smallest place I found was 20 and 1/2 feet near the Glave Utility District entrance on Vesta Road, and it's 20 feet at or near 191 Vesta Road by our measurements, and that's just an informal measurement where we took tape across the pavement. It's 22 feet at or near the intersection with Vesta, with 231, and it's 21 feet at or near or just east of Zachary Road. Zachary Road, which is another proposed entrance from this subdivision, has road widths featuring anywhere from 19 to 21 feet, or, excuse me, 18 to 21 feet, 18 at the very southern end of Zachary Road. Copies of this request have been made available to all of our different agencies, whether it be the road commission or the school system, and Wilson Emergency Management, who did consult with us about the fire service commitments in terms of sprinkling and potentially having a two-acre site that may be, may or may not be used in the future for some infrastructure like a fire station. Drainage, I'm glad you mentioned that. I don't know about sinkholes without, until we get into subdivision development, which, whether or not it's rezoned, if it ever subdivides, we'll be reviewing it for drainage.
I didn't catch if there was five sinkholes or 20-something sinkholes.
Five, five. I think he said five, but...
But you know the thing we're having in planning zoning right now about the sinkholes? Are these sinkholes going to be required to be left open?
Well, initially, I think that's the policy that we're, that our stormwater office is looking at. I can't speak for them, but our county engineer and our county stormwater office, per the policy they presented to you guys, had said that the preference in most cases is to keep them open. Now, we have some in this county not terribly far from here that we're deeming it may be time for somebody to get in there and clean one out to see if it'll drain better, but we have to take sinkholes on kind of a case-by-case basis. In terms of off-site drainage, I know someone mentioned if there could be, make a recommendation if this was to pass, or even if it doesn't pass and gets subdivided A1. Either way, our policy is to try to provide 0% increase in runoff pre-to-post development. I want to stop and pause for just a minute. There are a lot of people, particularly in the Glave area and also across the county, that experienced extreme flooding a little bit less than a month ago. Unfortunately, no jurisdiction that I'm aware of can account for that amount of rain in that short a period of time on any given week or weekday or weekend day. I think we got anywhere from above six inches to eight and 1/2 inches or so in different parts of the county in a 24-hour period. When it rains that much, some places are going to collect water, and no designed drainage system that I know of, per requirements in any jurisdiction, is going to accommodate that kind of rain.
This is in Commissioner Robinson's district, I believe. So I'll let her speak to begin with, and then I'll take any questions or queue them in. Commissioner Robinson?
This, this area is, the roads are good in this area. This one is one of the better roads. Now, there will be three ways to come out. I think it's about a mile from 231. You have Vesta, and then it does go to 840. So this, that area out there, Wayne is absolutely correct, that's Hurricane Creek out there, it's going to flood. Anybody that's out there, been out there as long as I have, and Ms. Weathers has, and all that stuff, we know all about Hurricane Creek, and we know that it, that it will, it will flood out there. But this is going from A1 to R1. It can be, still be developed, you know, but it's A1 to R1, and it comes with a positive recommendation from the planning staff. So I ask that it be approved.
Got a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Now discussion. Commissioner McFarland?
I'd like, Tom, to address if there is any planning for water retention on this property or that comes later.
That would come, that would, respectfully, that would come during subdivision... That, that would come, that would, respectfully, that would come during subdivision development. That would come when we get specified...
Why we vote to increase, change the zoning and add more houses, which is going to cause more runoff, like you people say, without taking that into consideration on the front end?
Because we have a policy that we don't increase runoff pre-to-post development as it stands now.
I can't buy off of the policy. I mean, if, if we're going to approve a greater number of houses, we need to have something, flood retention, planning any retention ponds that can go up to three inches of rain to even whatever it is. I think.
I understand, I understand your point. I may not be the correct person to have up here talking about it, because engineering is not my expertise.
I'm, I'm simply saying, before we increase the number of houses that can go on here, that engineers that are doing this need to show how they're going to maintain water retention on the property. Period. And that's what we've been addressing in planning zoning committee, you know that. We, we say every day that you can't run your water off of somebody else, and we do it every day.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Bishop? Commissioner Bishop?
This is repetitive, but what did you say about the living space? Did you say 2,000 square feet?
Yes. The homes that are going to be in this neighborhood will feature 2,000 square feet of heated living area.
Okay, thank you.
Any other?
Tom, I noticed on the plan that there is a retention pond, and that's part of the development.
Yes, there are, there are, in concept, proposed water quality detention areas.
This is concept?
This is concept. I mean, I, they don't get into the details of doing detailed drainage plans until we get into development. And that would be if they, if it didn't get zoned, if it was A1. It does have a step system.
So soils areas have to be set up?
The, the soils areas for the step system, I don't think are finalized either. I, I don't know if anybody from the Water and West Water Authority is here, but that does not get finalized until you get into subdivision development.
Mr. McFarlane?
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm probably the only one here, but I, I think we'll defer this until we can see what water retention and the detention ponds and all are going to be on this. I'll make that motion.
Got a motion to defer it? I hear a second.
Second.
I got a motion to second. Any discussion? Tom, anything else you want to add to that before we vote?
My understanding is there are no discussion on the deferral request.
We do.
No discussion on the deferral motion.
We can do that.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Mr. Dow?
How long is this, how long is your deferral?
Thirty days, a hundred years long.
Thirty days.
Thirty days.
Information coming, yes.
So the engineer can bring us what it's going to be. Engineer will just probably...
So, I, I think the question that I guess bring up is that, on the, all of the stuff that we're talking about getting done is normally done, Tom, and I'll address this to you, is normally done after you find out how many houses you can have, if they rezone it, then you go back and you do the planning for those houses, but if you don't have enough soils, as Commissioner Kurtz says, to allow for 225, then you can't have 225. And then whatever water runoff that you've got there, you've got to account for that, and it's got to stay on the property. And if that takes up some of your lots, then that, that's why we don't do this ahead of time?
That's correct. It, it typically comes between, everywhere that I know of, in every jurisdiction, it comes during subdivision development and/or site plan development for commercial development.
So what he's asking to defer, will that, will that...
I don't have a problem if you wish to defer it, to try to get the engineering staff that the applicant has applied, has retained, to provide additional information if they wish, but in terms of what we can do with it, I don't, I can only review what, what's been submitted to me, and I don't have any detailed drainage plans that have been submitted, nor are they stand, nor are they traditionally submitted at rezoning stage.
Mr. Kurtz?
Tom, what am I missing with the PUD? I mean, it's in, in the name itself says what we're supposed...
Yes, it's a planned unit development, and you do get certain commitments out of it, and you can certainly ask for additional drainage details. There's, there's nothing wrong with that. I'm just telling you, there's nothing in the current PUD language that requires it right now.
I'm not, and I agree, I'm not ready to put the cart before the horse.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
Tom, if I understand right, it meets what we have in place today. If we're not satisfied with that, we, as the county, at a later date, need to change what we have in place.
With regard to planning unit development ordinance, yes. I think that's what you're talking about.
Yes, just like we're talking about the sinkholes or whatever.
Yes, sir.
But the place meets what we have in place today.
For a rezoning request, that's correct.
For a rezoning request.
Tom, that don't mean it's right, though. It's in place.
How do we break our own rules, Mr. Gentry?
And, and I'm not, I don't, I don't sense I'm going to make you comfortable with this, but I will tell you that drainage is reviewed during the subdivision development process.
It is.
I do, my...
Look at this plant, and there's nothing on there says retention ponds or anything of that nature. We know down there...
There is, there is a water quality detention pond. I just can't do any calculations on it because it's not been detailed out.
Mr. Weathers?
I believe the engineer on this project is here tonight, maybe we could get some questions asked from him, answered from him.
Do we go out of session? Second.
No, 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 no.
You got a motion to defer on the floor, and you're really not...
Motion on the second.
Yeah. So... Okay, so what the, what the deferral is there for your motion to second to defer it is for them to bring it back with more information of whatever we can get for you to hear it next month if possible. So that's the motion and second on the floor to defer it. If you vote for that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed, raise your hand. So I got five that oppose, so it is 20 to five. It does defer, Mr. Fields, how do you vote on deferral? Yes, okay. So it, it is 20 to five on that. So we will defer this one then until we have more information.
Thank you, Mr. Warren.
Thank you.
I believe that completes my...
There's nothing else to go? Take care of them, okay?
Any other items to this well?
Okay. This time, we'll move to Commissioner Breeze for special recognition.
I knew it was going to pass, I knew there was no way in the world it was going to pass. At this time, if I could have the Green Hill High School FFA team come join me up here?
We're doing poll first. We're doing poll first.
We can, I don't care.
As these young ladies are coming forward, I just wanted to say this is a, the FFA program at Green Hill High School has been, I mean, of all the programs at Green Hill, they have hit the ground running. And they have done, I can't even tell you all they've done. I mean, every time I drive up there, something is happening with this group of, of young ladies and the rest of their, people that are in their, their group in FFA. So I'm really honored to be able to honor you guys tonight. So, resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, honoring the Green Hill FFA Cooperative Development Challenge Team. Whereas Green Hill High School, Wilson County's newest high school, is proud to be home to the state champion FFA Cooperative Development Challenge Team, which won the event on February 25th, 2021. And whereas the Tennessee FFA Cooperative Development Challenge provides competition that fosters assimilation, critical thinking, and problem-solving skills necessary to successfully develop career skills toward participating in starting up or managing a cooperative. And whereas, the Green Hill team had to develop a portfolio before competition requiring them to research the need for and then develop a cooperative related to agriculture, sorry, using the seven principles of cooper, cooperatives, requiring records to be kept of all meetings, financial records kept of all business activity, and being prepared to explain the records during the question-and-answer period of their presentation at the state event. And whereas, the team had to take a cooperative knowledge test with a written exam testing the ability of the participants to use decision-making and problem-analysis skills while applying economic principles and concepts taught in farm business management. And whereas, each team member was required to work independently to complete the written exam, delivering a set of results for scoring and receiving individual scores on the exam, being allowed 30 minutes to complete the written exam. And whereas, the presentation portion of the event was held on February 25th, 2021, with the goal to set, the judges on the idea that their cooperative is needed, explain to the judges how their cooperative observes the seven principles of cooperatives, and evaluate the success and pitfalls experienced during this cooperative venture. And whereas, at this completion of the competition, the team from Green Hill High School finished first in the state, whereas the team members were freshman Sarah Wright, sophomore Ashley Demumbrian, sophomore Maddie Glenn, junior Abby, Abby Hamblin, and Judy Cora, junior Cora Jenkins, excuse me. And whereas, not only was the state champ, was this team state champions, but they finished first in the district and first in the regional competitions. And whereas, this team was very capably led, advised, and instructed by Lindsay Nicholas of Green Hill High School. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, that we hereby honor, recognize, and congratulate the members of the Green Hill Cooperative Development Challenge Team and instructor Lindsay Nicholas on their outstanding performance, work, and dedication culminating in state championship for their team in Green Hill High School.
Move to approve.
All in favor say aye.
All right. Do you want to come introduce yourselves real quick as you, as you leave? And then I have one copy of the official resolution. Unfortunately, there, there were supposed to be multiple copies, but we only had one made for some reason, so I will get extra copies, so all five of you have the resolution as well as your school. So I'm going to leave this with you, and if you'd like to introduce yourself, then you can go out this door over here. Thank you so much for joining us.
Congratulations, ladies.
Hi, I'm Abby Hamblin.
I'm Ashley Demumbrian.
I'm Cora Jenkins. I'm Sarah Wright.
Congratulations. Now, we'll ask Commissioner Robinson to come forward. Since we're doing a lot of educational recognition, I would like to recognize Mr. Jeff Luttrell, who's in the crowd. Mr. Jeff is the new Wilson County School Superintendent upon the retirement of Dr. Rodd. I'm sure she'll say more. I'm glad to have you with us tonight.
While this family is up here, I'd like to just say something. You know, it's a, it's a joy for me to be able to honor these young people when they have accomplished so much for the years that they've been in, in high school and, and for what they have done. And this is one of the greatest things that I think that we do is to recognize these young people for their accomplishments. But I will say, to me being involved with, I had two boys, very involved in baseball and, and sports and all, and you know, it's not about just this young man right here. It, it comes also from the parents and the mentors and the coaches and the principals and all that in these schools that, that helped these young people to get through them. It's just not about, he does a great job, but I know from myself, me, all the practices and the ballgames and everything that I went through and, and even, and had a job even worked, you know, that it's a wonderful accomplishment, and, and the parents also need to be thanked. And this resolution is just not for Hunter, but it's for y'all also. Resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, honoring Hunter Borders for being a state champion in wrestling. Whereas Hunter Borders of Wilson Central High School has an outstanding four-year career in high school wrestling, and whereas a three-time state champion, he has been undefeated for the last two seasons. And whereas, during his four years wrestling for Wilson Central, he has had 214 career wins. And whereas, he is a four-time region champion, and in addition to his state championship, was state runner-up one time. And whereas, Hunter has wrestled for 14 years and is a six-time All-American at various national tournaments. And whereas, he has received the Johnny Drennan Award from Middle Tennessee, signifying that he is the top wrestler in Middle Tennessee. And whereas, Hunter is a 2021 nominee for the Tennessee, Middle Tennessee Wrestler of the Year. Whereas, while Hunter has accomplished many individual awards, he has helped his Wilson Central High School wrestling teams to three state tournament runner-up finishes and two state dual runner-ups. And whereas, Hunter is also very active in other areas at Wilson Central, and when he not in school or wrestling, he enjoys fishing and skateboarding while working at the Home Depot in Hermitage. Whereas, he is the son of Mr. Thomas and Ms. Mindy Borders, and is a product of the Wilson County School Systems, beginning at WA Wright Elementary, proceeding to Mount Juliet Middle School, and then to Wilson Central High School, where he will graduate in May. Whereas, after graduation, Hunter will go, will be attending Pelasippe State to pursue a business degree, and will give up wrestling to pursue that degree. Now, therefore, it be resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, that he hereby recognize Wilson Central High School Wrestler Hunter Borders for his outstanding career wrestling for Wilson Central High School, congratulate him on his many accomplishments, and offer our support and encouragement as he graduates from Wilson Central High School and pursues a business degree in college.
Move to approve.
All in favor say aye.
I'd like to thank God, my family, and my coaching staff over there.
Hey, I'd like to have to do one thing, hold all them rings up.
120 this year.
120 on the weight class. Could I have the coaches in the back to stand up, state your name and your other occupation, if you would? I know one of them, not for sure about the other one.
Coach Kent Hammond, uh, Wilson County I teacher.
Thank you both, and I really appreciate Ms. Robinson recognizing the family's contribution to the state champion. That's awesome. At this time, Commissioner Glover.
So we're getting Lebanon High School, coaching staff, if anybody here with the team, come on up, y'all can kind of spread out around the front here. We'll get them in here. Just kind of line up on both sides. Congratulations, ladies. The rest of them are coming up. Coach Barrett has done an outstanding job at Lebanon High School. How long you been here, Coach Barrett?
Six years.
Six years. How many times you went to the MTSU?
Three.
Three times?
Three here.
And last year, you were robbed, right?
Yes, sir.
COVID took away the chance to sit there and win it all. But what, what did he, what did he do? He sat there and made it happen this year, and they went back and runners-up with the state is pretty amazing, and just a great representation of, of our county, of our schools, and just extremely excited to be here. Matter of fact, I hit, I guess, two or three of the games at MTSU, and just super proud of the way they're, they held theirsself, the way that during the National Anthem, they stood, put their hand across their heart, and just that, made me proud of our school, just really exciting. The resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, honoring the 2021 T double S double A triple A state runner-up Lebanon High School Blue Devil, Blue Devil Ets basketball team. Whereas, the Lebanon High School Blue Devil Ets finished the season with an overall record of 30 wins and five losses, concluded an outstanding season by finishing up runner-up in the 2021 T double S double A triple A state championship in Murphysboro, Tennessee. Whereas, in advancing to the state championship game, this team had an outstanding regular season, finishing as regular season District Nine triple A champions with a record of 15 wins and one loss. District Nine triple A tournament champions defeating Wilson Central, Green Hill High School, and Beach, winning the region five triple A championship by feeding, defeating Henry County, Rossview, Clarksville Northwest, then defeating Kane Ridge at 68 to 50 for the sectional championship, propelling them to the... the sectional championship, propelling them to the Class triple A state tournament where they defeated Bradley County, or Bradley Central, sorry, and Hardin County before falling to Blackman in the state championship game. Whereas senior members of this team included Avery Harris, if you raise your hand, and also Addie Grace Porter. Is she here?
Senior night sophomore.
Senior night. Whereas junior members of the team are Asia Barr, Lexi Crowder, Meosha Mason, Ms. Rankins, and Terry Reynolds. Whereas sophomore members of the team included Madison Jennings, Macy Jones, Julia Amennis, and Finley Tomlin. Whereas the freshman members of the team were Callie Crowder, Jaden Harris, Samia Reedy, Grace Reed, Sandy Scott, Jamaya Whitfield, and Brooklyn Young. And I'm sorry if I said any names wrong. Individual awards were numerous with Avery Harris, Meosha Mason, and Terry Reynolds being regular season all district, Addie Grace Porter being the regular season most valuable player, and Coach Corey Barrett being Coach of the Year. Whereas Asia Barr and Meosha Mason were District Nine triple A all tournament selections, with Addie Grace Porter again being most, most valuable player. Whereas Meosha Mason and Terry Reynolds were all tournament selections for the Region Five triple A tournament, with Addie Grace Porter again being the MVP. Whereas Asia Barr, Avery Harris, Addie Grace Porter were all state tournament selections. Whereas this team was coached by Corey Barrett, and very, and assisted by assistant coaches Taylor Angel, Cassie Hyatt, Kay Maynard, and Iceland McCarver. And whereas others who played important roles for this team during this championship season included managers Corey Yancy and Kiara McGodrick, and certified athletic trainer Jacob Witterd. Whereas the accomplishments of this year's team are especially significant in a lot of the fact that they earned the right to go to the state tournament in the 2019, 2020, before the state tournament was canceled due to COVID-19. And this team set a goal to return to the state tournament this year in earning that right to do so. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, that we hereby recognize Lebanon High, High School Blue Devil Ets basketball team for their very successful season, and thank them for the pride and excitement that they have brought to their school and the city of Lebanon and to Wilson County. Motion to approve.
All in favor say aye.
Real quick, I'd like to thank Mr. Glover and all the county commissioners for honoring us here tonight. And we would like to present the county commission with a signed team poster. And if anyone else wants individuals, we can definitely get you guys those, so just get us a count, and we'll make sure we take care of those. But thank you very much for all you do and the support of our high school and within our county. Thank you.
One more thing. If everybody leaves, one at a time, come by here and say your name, so they can hear it the right, the correct way.
I'll take it. Thanks, sir.
Macy Jones.
Yeah, she makes them.
Asia Barr.
Julia Amennis.
Madison Jennings.
Samaya Reedy.
Finley Tomlin.
Avery Harris.
Jaden Harris.
Terry Reynolds.
Jamaya Whitfield.
Grace Reed.
Brooklyn Young.
Iceland McCarver.
Cassie Hyatt.
Taylor Angel.
And that's a future Devil Ets right there, Carly Barrett.
Now I have special recognition by Joy Cooper to come forward this time. Director Cooper.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Smith. My bad.
Also, anybody on the EMA could step up? I could have everybody on the EMA committee to come join me. Also, Director Cooper and all of EMA personnel that's here tonight, if you would, come on up, please, if you would. Before we get started, I want to thank the commission for allowing us to be able to come here tonight. I want to thank every one of you that are here in the auditorium that's with us, and also everyone that's tuning in at home. I want to thank you for taking the time out of your schedule and being a part of our local government. I can remember when Joy Cooper actually asked me, and I was actually honored when he asked me if I would be a part of this, and, you know, I began to kind of think to myself a little bit about what these gentlemen do every day. And we, we turn on the TV, or we, we open our Facebook, or an Instagram, and we see a picture, or, I'm going to try to keep myself together because this kind of hits home to me. It's easy to kind of just see it for a brief moment and then forget about it. I can remember one thing that's kind of been in store to me ever since what I do is service before self. There's many of you in this room that's put yourself before everything else, whether it's fighting fires, being police officers, schoolteachers, paramedics, law enforcement, military. And I want to share one verse that kind of hits home, and I'm not going to preach to you tonight, but in John chapter 15, verse 3, it says, "Greater love has no one than this, than a man to lay down his life for one of his friends." You know, these gentlemen, they probably get into a routine of just getting up, going to shift, answering your calls, and going home. Kind of becomes regular. But there are days that sometimes there, there are times that we are asked to put our lives on the line. And there's times that you can't second guess, you just have to go. So I want to read this as a Medal of Valor citation for these gentlemen. It says, "A Medal of Valor citation awarded to paramedic firefighter Mr. Nick Wright and advanced EMT firefighter Marcus King. In the early morning of January the 31st, 2021, Wilson County Emergency Management Units, Engine Six, Medic Three, Shift Commander Copus, were dispatched to report a motor vehicle accident. Initial dispatch information advised that there was a car in the water. Engine Six arrived on the scene and found a car had crashed through the guardrail and was upside down in a lake. These documents of the car was still trapped in the vehicle. Paramedic Wright and advanced EMT King entered the water to evaluate the situation. They found that neither of the doors were able to be opened. They then retrieved the spreaders and used them to gain access to the patient. They removed him from the vehicle, returned him to the roadway, and began patient care. Medic Three assumed firefighting exhaustion, or excuse me, Medic Three assumed to remove him from the vehicle, returned him to the roadway, and began to patient care. But paramedic Wright and advanced EMT King continued to assist the patient care while fighting exhaustion and hypothermia themselves. The patient was transported to a local hospital and was made to full recovery. Therefore, it is with the great pride of Wilson County Emergency Management, we want to award paramedic firefighter Mr. Nick Wright and advanced EMT firefighter Marcus King the Medal of Valor for their explanatory, their explanatory performance and their duties while under hazardous conditions, while confronted with imminent personal risk, and performed a conspicuous act of heroism which furthered the highest traditions of Wilson County Emergency Management. Before we stand, and before we award this, I want to say thank you guys personally. I've been there with you guys on some cause, but what you guys did that night means more than what anybody can probably ever say thank you. I mean, it, it means a lot to this county, so we appreciate it. And Joey Cooper, I want to thank you as a director. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a tough job. I know we've been through COVID. I know it's been a rough year, but I appreciate your, your team always for doing what they do. So with that being said, we'd like to award this, this day, April the 19th of 2021, to these gentlemen.
They sacrifice for this county every day, and I wouldn't ask for anything different. They're the ones that make me look good. So thank you very much for what you do. And you have to realize, all this was done underwater. They extricated through the doors and everything, and the victim, they were all underwater when they done this. So there, it was, it took a split-second decision for them to decide what they were going to do. And they decided that the patient was viable, and they could do something, and they reacted. And I thank them for that, and thank y'all for recognizing them. Thank you. Paramedic Nick Wright and EMT Marcus King. So, I mean, you don't say anything.
We appreciate the commission's support in everything we do, and helping us further our agenda and helping the citizens of the county.
This time, I would like, County Attorney Mike Jennings would like to address the crowd.
Steering Committee voted earlier this month to limit special recognitions to three per meeting. So I wanted to let you know for May, I've already got, you've already got three. Commissioner Franklin, Commissioner Breeze, who put one off from tonight, and Commissioner Jones. And Commissioner Vanata has already dropped her name in the hat for July, so if you've got something, we got three spots in June and two in July, but May is taken, unless you can talk one of those three out of their spot.
Time limit? Was that a time limit also?
We did. What was it, five minutes, total of 15 minutes? Yes, I forgot about that.
Report from Minutes Committee, Commissioner Bishop.
The Minutes Committee, Minutes Courthouse, in the commission meeting room at 5:38 on Thursday, April the 8th. The four members present approve the minutes that were sent in your packet, and I make a motion that this report be received and filed.
Motion.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. And opposed? Reading of the minutes?
I move that we dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. And opposed? Commissioner McFarland, will you push your button to request to speak, just making sure they work? Thank you, it's good to go. Clear them off.
It does sound it goes off.
Yes, sir. It wasn't coming up at all, I just want to be sure as I go through these, I wasn't going to miss anybody. Okay. Just to let you know that Clark Sampson will be replacing Mr. Juigan Sampson on the Legarda Utility District Board, and Clayton Gray was reappointed to that board, and that communication came through us this month. I just need to get it in the minutes to be read. Notaries, Mr. Goodall, anybody to be added to our list? We're good to go, do I hear a motion to approve a notary? Second? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. And opposed? Solid Waste Regional Planning Board, two members here, you are to confirm my appointment of two members to serve a six-year term on the Solid Waste Regional Planning Board upon your confirmation. I would like to appoint Mr. Lon Myers and Mr. Lawrence Pat Woods. You have information in your packet on these candidates, do I hear a motion on this?
Motion to approve.
Second? I got a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. And opposed? Board of Equalization, one member here, you are to elect one member to the Board of Equalization to fill the vacancy created by the resignation of Mr. Terry Poston, which did this job for quite some time, but he said farming was kind of getting in the way of Board of Equalization, and so he asked to be relieved of that. So I'd like to recommend to you, Mr. Jerry Dow, to fill the vacancy, which expires April of 2022. Information about Mr. Dow was in your packet. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Got a motion in second on Mr. Dow, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. And opposed? Okay. Report from Emergency Management Committee, Commissioner Glover.
EMA Committee met March 29th at 5:00 PM, met upstairs in the conference room. I move that be received and filed.
Second.
I got a motion in second, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. And opposed? Emergency Management Director's report, Director Cooper.
Good evening. Our report's in your packet. Our call volume year-to-date, right now is 4,539. We're still working with the COVID testing and vaccinations, and been involved in the flood recovery process. Right now, active cases in the county's 349, total vaccinated 71,638. That's a total of 30.75% statewide, 3.5 million has been vaccinated, which is 53.9%. 14-day average is 28.1 for new cases reported per day, and over the last seven days, the average percent positive was 9.4, so that those numbers are still pretty good. For the flood, that information is also in your packet. We had a total of 242 recorded structures involved, and the breakdowns, you can look at those yourself. We did have our PA FEMA meetings today, so that's going well. We also done the individual assistance evaluations with the state, and FEMA was done Friday. So most of that was done then, so from there, everything gets turned into the state, and then they'll turn things over to Governor Lee, and then from there, he will advise for the president on a declaration. So we're still going through that process. And also you have flood data map. Of course, those are in black and white. If you want one in color, I can get you one that shows all the locations that were recorded. Other than that, that concludes my report, unless there's any questions.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. And opposed? Thank you, Director Cooper. And just in case you get hit by, you know, why hasn't the county, is that a state of emergency? The state of emergency is that we do allow us to go around procurement processes, that if I have to move, or we have to act in, in kind of a quick motion, so we can put that state of emergency into where we can do things, buy things without going through procurement. Since we didn't have a need for that, we didn't do that this time. We have it written so that when FEMA decides that they're going to turn us loose and say we declared, that we're declared a disaster, then we'll write, we'll, we'll send that one through. It's already written, ready to go, and that will allow the citizens then to apply through FEMA for assistance. Right now, I can declare it, but there's still no FEMA assistance because it has to be declared by the president. So, so if you hear that out there, I tried to explain it this morning on the radio, but if you have any discussion on that, you can send them to me. Recover Wilson is still helping citizens, so if you have citizens that need help, also send them here. We'll get them on the right place, the website, to get them assistance. We've helped some of people already with dumpsters and different things of that nature. Report from Law Enforcement Committee, Commissioner Rich.
Mr. Chairman, fellow commissioners, the Law Enforcement Committee met at Criminal Justice Center on April 6th. Just a reminder, Law Enforcement Committee will meet tomorrow night at 5 o'clock, Criminal Justice Center, with EMA immediately following. Make a motion, these minutes be received and filed.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Sheriff's report, Sheriff Bryan. And as Sheriff Bryan's coming, we did get a note today from the state that they were some company that didn't turn in their positive cases from November to April. So that made a large hit on the number of cases that we have, so we won't report all those at one time, but if you hear some conversations like that, you'll know that's kind of what happened, okay? I can't, I don't know for sure the name of the company, but they got them all in at one time, and they recorded them this weekend, so it was several cases, but our, our numbers have not jumped, they've been So it was several cases, but our numbers have not jumped, they've been pretty much on a steady plane for the last little bit. Sheriff Bryan.
Thank you, Mayor. County Commissioners, your reports in your packet. Going over some of the numbers, we see the calls for service really jumped up this month, almost nine hundred calls. We continue to work a couple of numbers as far as the state warrants received, and the inmates in the jail is, it's a direct reflection on the court systems opening back up. It is, it is wide open right now, so it's, them numbers are, as I've said before, them, our jail numbers are pre-COVID numbers. So, I can see that continue to rise. As far as it relates to talking about the jail, the jail expansion is in full, full steam ahead. Most of the demolition that needed to be done on their existing building has been done, and they're working on pads and moving right along. So, the quicker, the better for me. The, as far as your rest of your report, school resources officers still continue to stay busy, schools wide open now, and a lot going on in the School Resource Officers Division. One more thing, the, we have started backup during COVID with our senior citizens awareness program. We sort of had to sort of shut it down, we've been doing most of our visits on phone, phone calls and stuff like that. They've worked together with a lot of their recipients to get vaccinations, get these people two vaccinations to get it done, and we're starting it back up. So you'll see the scan cars back out visiting some of our senior citizens, and that's an important thing we do. The road crews are out, again, I say this every time, but please call me, or Chief Owen, or any, one of us, if y'all see some roads that need attention, we'll do our best to get them on the list and them picked up. As far as that, that concludes my report, unless there's any questions.
Any discussion? Questions for Sheriff? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you, Sheriff Bryan. I will add, yes ma'am? I'm sorry, Commissioner Pat? Yes, I'm a bad, no, go ahead.
I just wanted to, who asked Sheriff Bryan if he was aware of how much backup was out there in space? For the guys when they come out?
The what now?
We appreciate Jesse.
Oh, yes, yes, well, I think we've had that conversation, so. He's doing well. Thank you. Thank you. I will add two other things to it, the church, I think their last Sunday, that they'll have the church occupied behind this, will be April the twenty-fifth, was a note that I got today. That could change. They were gonna be out earlier, foam is on back order, and that's why they can't finish their seats in their new church. Second thing, you may hear some parking issues because courts are back in full session, and the construction area has taken a lot of parking. But we were making an adjustment this week, and hopefully we'll help that and resolve that. So if you hear any complaints, again, you can send them to me, but I think we're gonna make some adjustments, and we'll take care of that because they can park at behind the church. Report from Education Committee, Commissioner Stafford.
Mr. Chair, fellow commissioners, the Education Committee met on April the eighth in the upstairs courtroom. The minutes are in your packet, I move that be received and filed, if there are no questions.
Motion, second, now any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
And as Dr. Wright come, I'd like to welcome or offer my condolences to Mr. Luttrell.
All righty. Director of Schools report, Dr. Donna Wright.
Good evening. Now, I've been preempted twice tonight already from a formal recognition, but I will still say that as far as the new director of schools. I want to note on the report that you have in your packet, a correction, it's down, essentially would be the one, two, three, fourth paragraph, where it says the board approved the middle school program stays for two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two. That might seem fairly innocuous, but that was something that was presented to our board as far as a work that's been in progress for a little, nearly five years, a revamping middle school curriculum and programming, to add a little more robust, so that it's not something that's right between elementary and high school, but more of a really good transition, as well as adding some really strong programs, particularly in career and technical education. So, I want to make note of that, that it wasn't to be approved, but it was for their information that evening. And so when this report was written up, it was, that's misrepresented there, so if you'll strike that. But the next sentence, the more career technical, career technical education classes will be offered in the middle schools, and making that transition at that time. So that was important to note for our students. Again, a lot of just information in this, but it was also written in the past tense as far as, because when this is put together, things will transpire during that time. I want to note that we will be awarding a little over twenty-three-hundred employees, both classified and certified, a thousand-dollar bonus for their extraordinary effort and work for this year, going back to March the third. Moving forward, our folks, and I've shared this many times, there's no other school district in the state that's endured what we have. And I've been told really in the nation as far as not only the loss of the schools, but even as we look at it as a community, what's happened here, and then the pandemic itself. Over the summer, when many people were off contract, we were feeding, we were mobilizing, we were checking on families. And I'm using the plural we because that's, that's how it works. Everyone from crossing guards to food services, to bus drivers, to teachers, administrators, and I never could even express the pride. But then, that's how this community works. I mean, we've certainly seen this. And it was one that the state was awarding what they referred to as a four-percent raise to teachers, certified staff only, no other individuals. And when it calculates out, we have well above what the B E P formula references. In fact, we have over two hundred and thirty, because we don't provide a basic program, we go well above that. And so when you calculate with just thirteen-hundred staff, and when our first installment was seven-hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand dollars, I don't need, you know, you can do the math quickly and understand how that would distribute among thirteen-hundred certified. Well, something that's been coming along with the CARE pack, as well as ESER dollars, we made this decision, I made the decision, that we would also recognize all employees, and because those can only be used for non-recurring uses, what better way than to recognize our employees for their work, their effort, and for taking care of the boys and girls in this school district? And so that will be presented at the end of June, by the time we get the state money and the ESER dollars. And again, you'll see the exclusion, board members, Donna Wright, non-faculty volunteers, private practice nurses that work one-on-one with students through insurance companies, and anyone that with contracted, contracted services, so everyone else will be provided. And when that was announced, I will have to say, particularly crossing guards, it would have just, really would have broken your heart because, you know, it was one of those things that, even us, oh my goodness, what would we do without you? So, I wanted to make sure that was noted. And I want to thank you all for recognizing our students. And we could go on and on, because sometimes, it's not that they're overlooked, sometimes we just take it for granted. And particularly the adults that work with them and mentor them and gives the hours. I mean, tonight you had Green Hill High School, you had Wilson Central, you had Lebanon High School. And I mean, you talk about some things that are just fun to watch, but even in the last month, we've had Carol Oakland that swept the state in a poetry and essay competition, and that was, again, for their age group, absolutely phenomenal. And so we'll keep playing the sport. And when you look at Green Hill High School, I mean, they had, you know, a young man that placed first, Dominic Love in wrestling, and it was, you know, like, where'd this kid come from? And so that, thank you so much. I mean, you know, we always have what I look over here, Commissioner Costley over here, the perennial winners that we, you know, as far as that, we just take so many things for granted. But again, there's so much talent in this school district, and I thank you for recognizing, but particularly recognizing the adults that not only coached them, mentored them, which, you know, that was mentioned tonight, with very little fanfare. Until they make it to the top, and then they're recognized. So, thank you for that, because it makes the entire community better. And so with that, I want to formally recognize someone, someone that I'm honored to introduce, that will be your new director of Wilson County Schools on July one, Mr. Jeff Luttrell.
Thank you, Dr. Wright, thank you, County Commissioner. I'm excited, I'm a, you know, it's been easy, and I've been through the wringer in the last three weeks, I feel like, deservedly so, it should, I should have been. And it was easy to tell this story, because I'm a product, professional product of Wilson County Schools, coming from university, chose to raise a family here. So I'm excited, and I'm excited to work with you. We'll be reaching out upcoming weeks to get to know you individually. What we have, everybody in the country wants, and it's a great county, it's a great school system. We've got some challenges that I'll refer to opportunities, because we've got to protect that. And that was a whole part of why I wanted to be involved, and to lead, and to serve, and to work with you. I've been so impressed in my career here of how the commission has always provided above and beyond to ensure that our students get what they need and the opportunities they need. That's crucial. I benefit from that as a, as a student, and as an educator. And I will tell you, that'll always be the center, you're gonna learn, and we'll fight for all, because I think that's what's made us great. And I think that I'm so fortunate to be standing here, it's because of public education, because of teachers and mentors, and directors of schools and county commissions that invested in me, sometimes in ways they didn't even know. So, I'm excited, I look forward to getting to know you, getting to work with you. I will always be straightforward, that's the only way I know to do it. And I really know some things that we've got setting out there, the growth. But I'm convinced, after watching you, that you have the concern of students and employees at heart, and I will be reaching out to you and working with you, and thank you for the opportunity. Thank you.
And I will sleep well after June the thirtieth. With that, that concludes my report for this evening.
Will the report be received and filed?
Got a motion, a second, now Commissioner Breeze?
I just wanted to let you know that Dominic Love wasn't forgotten, unfortunately.
I know.
He's out of town tonight, so we've moved his resolution to May, so.
Not to preempt you, but I figured, I mean, I was getting preempted, but I want to recognize he's a special young man that, I mean, just surprised a lot of people.
That's right.
Very talented, so.
Mr. Stafford?
For all you do.
Yes, Dr. Wright, can you give us an update on the school insurance laws? Or did you do that? Was I not paying attention?
Please. Been awarded.
The who?
Mr. Gentry got preempted.
Yeah, I didn't say a word.
Okay, I was making notes, I'm sorry, I was writing notes over here, well, I'm sorry.
You want to withdraw that?
Never mind. Let it go. Let it go.
Commissioner Rich?
Yes, I'd like to commend you on one thing, I don't know if it's your decision or the board's decision, but looking at your graduation ceremonies, this is the first time I ever remember all graduation ceremonies are held in Wilson County, which I think they should be. So whoever made this decision, I don't know if it's because of COVID or what, but I'd like to see it this way every year.
Well, I will pass that word along to the new director coming up. It is the result of the pandemic, and the thing that, you know, many places that we would have traditionally, particularly just of the large crowds, were not available. And, but, you know, I do agree with you, I just wish that we would look at it more in an, as an evening presentation, as opposed to ten o'clock in the morning, and when it's about a hundred degrees out there in those robes. So, but thank you.
We've got a large expo center, that can accommodate everybody.
Yeah, but if we can get just, we gotta get those bleachers up there where people can see, because that, that's usually the complaint that parents, they want to see their children, so.
Mr. Costley?
Well, back to the dominance in sports, you happen to know a six-two, six-three female softball pitcher sent her my way? I will go back to being dominant, all I'm lacking.
I will look.
Commissioner Glover, as a recruit.
No recruiting, just maybe put her in our area.
I've heard different things about the portable classrooms, getting ready to start on the buildings, can you give us an update on all that?
I will be happy to, and much of it's concept stage right now, but we, in fact, we did a site visit this morning with the team that's looking at where and how that will play out. And, and just to give, I guess, if anything, Commissioner, what we're dealing with right now, we are continuing to grow. And with the lack of having space, particularly for our middle schools, right now, we have seventh and eighth grade classes that you wouldn't think that people would make, be making that transition to enroll, and maybe would wait till next year, but they're coming nevertheless. In fact, last week, West Wilson Middle School enrolled six new students. So, we had to go ahead and look to plan what would, could we do, once we finally went through the, what I call the tango and the waltz with the insurance company, what would be the best benefit? So, K five, we will have them presented on-site in front of the Phyllis Robinson Gymnasium, which, with all the storm damage that we had, the eight-hundred wing of West Wilson Middle School withstood the damage, and then the Phyllis Robinson Gym, which, I don't know if any of you saw the video, that that one camera captured, where, I mean, you're seeing the damage, the wind of the force, and that goes in and brings back, including the roof off the Quonset Hut at Mount Juliet Christian Academy, rolls up like a huge snail, about fifteen feet. The floor lifted in the gymnasium, but the building itself withstood the damage. So, we have not quite the work there that we would have anywhere else. So, twenty brand-new portable buildings that will have two classrooms per unit, each self-contained with a restroom. We will hold the number, even though the classrooms hold thirty-two students, we're gonna hold it to twenty, because we're talking about the younger children. And it will be set up and staged in front of the gymnasium, and boarded off, and, you know, and for the concerns that, you know, I've shared several times, we've had seven construction projects since I've been here while children were in school. Watertown Elementary probably being the most significant, that they even wrote a book called The ABCs of Construction while it was working, and it's quite good. It was, you know, the young children doing it. So, with that, we staged the gymnasium today, we have areas there that not only can we set up administrative offices, the workstations for teachers, we also can cordon off the back section of the gymnasium, so we'll have a P E center as far as to provide that. We will also be able to provide hot breakfast and lunch for students. We have, we'll be able to set that up, so over the summer, the infrastructure is set up, the water, the electric, the sewer. And then where we will be cording off the footprint of Stoner Creek as it's being constructed. But it, both West Wilson and Stoner Creek will be demolished before all, any student sets foot in the construction. What we're hoping and planning for, if the material, materials that we are concerned about being delivered, that we will at least have the footers poured when students come back in August. But we're getting a little concerned with what's happening with building materials right now, but, you know, we, I guess we've been through worse. But nevertheless, the idea that we will have a little over six-hundred and twenty-five K through five, there was a question that came in over the weekend, why not just put the older kids there, the middle school kids, why would you put the younger kids there? The reason being, K through five is self-contained, that they're not changing classes other than going to another unit for related arts, or going into the big building. And they stay with their teachers, where the middle school kids will change classes several times throughout the day, and that would be harder to contain. So, a temporary measure, it'll be an easy transition from the portables, well, excuse me, the school village that we are creating. And just for the record, someone noted it, which should be learning cottages, but that's too cutesy. So, with that, they'll be able to transition into their building easily enough. So, we're hoping that August, someone might fuss at me, but August of twenty-two, which sounds far away, but just the fall from this year, that they'll be into their building. We're shooting for fourteen months, if weather doesn't delay us.
How much of a difference you think it's gonna be from the insurance money and the actual cost? Like, thirty dollars, forty dollars?
At least a hundred. I'll share more of that, once we, waiting for some final documents to be signed. And, and, you know, and I guess... And, you know, and I guess, if I don't get the stink eye from behind me here, I know that the delay has been a long time. I know that it's been challenging. And I will share some of those dynamics when we get the final release. But I will tell you, one of the things that was, that I was conscious of the entire time, that we needed two buildings and do everything I could not to have to come before this commission to get the funds needed. And if we had, if I had, part of it would have negated what we were doing with the insurance company. And which, you know, it's hard to explain because people were frustrated. I was frustrated. I mean, the criticism as far as looking at that pile of rubble. We understand that. But it's a delicate situation working with insurance. One of the criticisms we see, get bulldozers down, out there and mow it down. I'd love to. But it's like asking for permission. That's not what we agreed to. That's not what we agreed that we would pay. So once everything's finished, Commissioner Glover, I will be happy to share that if Mr. Jennings gives me the okay.
Whatever. You're the boss.
No, I'm looking for you for permission.
Dr. Wright, Stoner Creek is going to be rebuilt as its current floor plan?
No, it, that, when all this is settled, as far as that, the footprint will not be exactly like what was there. But the design will be more conducive to what we need to see in a school today.
But the middle school is going to be a total rebuild?
Except for the 800 wing, as far as those two units that, you know what, where I'm talking, I'm asking, do you know where I'm talking about? Yeah, so.
Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Dr. Wright, for your report. Bid packages for the removal, have they went out yet?
Not yet, not till we get this final signature. Which we, we got the paperwork on Friday, waiting for it to be reviewed. Reviewed, and we've got one little hiccup that needs to be resolved.
And will those be available at the central office, or do they need to contact Mr. Smith?
As far as they'll be available, because they're made public once they go out, so yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes, Dr. Wright, I want to thank you for your time working with the insurance companies, and I just can't imagine the patience to work with them. But quick question. I'm assuming that once the construction gets underway, there'll be a separate road for construction traffic versus school traffic?
Right now, as far as that we're having to contain, but as far as what you're seeing going in, it'll be the same thing that we've had at the other schools as well. You know, once school's in place, there's going to be traffic going in and out as far as containing it. But the thing, we've had construction before while children are on campus. But the students, where we will have, as far as Stoner Creek Elementary, they are not going to be, when you look at the access road that we're putting in that will circle around and circle out, they're not going to be competing with construction traffic going in and out as far as looking at the timing. And that's something we're, that we've also worked through as well.
But they'll be using the same roads?
Yes.
Any other questions for Dr. Wright? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Thank you, Dr. Wright. Trustee's report is in your packet. Ms. Murphy is here if you have any questions. If you see none, I don't think she is, she wants to speak at this time or anything. She's here. So do I hear a motion to approve her report?
Move.
Second. Any questions for her? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Trustees' report is also in your packet. Do I hear a motion to approve it?
Move.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Road Superintendent, Mr. Steve Murphy is here. That's more than you want in?
I was just going to give you a little information on the storm. We had a couple of roads that was damaged. Probably about 25 roads that were damaged there and the flooding that we had. Had a couple of roads that was washed completely out, but we got them back open. Good on that, so right now. We started our paving this week. Our bush hoggers started last week. A lot of you probably have seen them, but they're out bush hogging. We've got three, three of our arm tractors out running, as long as we can keep them together. So we're just doing our regular maintenance, and that concludes my report.
Second. Any discussion?
Did y'all by any chance fix the bridge out there at Big Springs Road in Overland Park?
Yes, sir. Yes, we got it. We got it all paved back in, and you in good shape. You can let her rip now.
Any other questions? Mr. Murphy? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ag Center report, Mr. Quentin Smith.
As Mr. Quentin comes forward, we do have an Ag Center meeting, I believe, tomorrow night. You'll have one next Tuesday and Thursday night at 6:00 here in the commission room as well. That one is just to discuss the Educational Learning Center that we're talking about putting out there, or Berthin Bar and Agricultural Learning Center. So that was really set aside for that. We set aside too, just in case we can't get done with the first one on Tuesday night, and you want to come back on Thursday night, it will be advertised. But if we don't need to use it, then we won't use Thursday night. But not to be confused with tomorrow night's meeting. Mr. Quentin?
Mayor, county commissioners, we've been really busy out at the Ag Center since I talked to y'all last. We had Tennessee Beef Agribition in March. Actually, the governor come out and was with us two days of that event. We had, we didn't hardly set a record with our numbers, but we come close this year. We were way up from what we were last year. A lot of you know, this past weekend, we had a monster truck show out at the fairgrounds, and it was very successful. Had a lot of folks call, actually wanting to know when we would have another one. Had a big cutting horse show this past weekend. It was the largest cutting horse show they've had out at the facility since they've been coming. Coming up in May, the Atlantic National ROV Angus Show, which is typically at the Maryland State Fairgrounds. They chose again this year not to let that show go on, so the Board of Directors voted to move it to Lebanon, Tennessee. That show's been going on since 1987, and I've been told that this will be the only time it's off-site. We'll be here in Lebanon, and I think that's a really good honor for us to have that. We'll go down in the history book. We'll also, in June, that shows in May, the Red Angus Junior National will be at our facility in June. Come July, we'll have the Airstream. That national convention will be out there. They'll actually be there with those silver bullets for about two weeks. Then in August, we're definitely, from my understanding, we're going to have a fair this year. So hopefully that all transpires into a showing of a big fair. I expect the way everything has went out at the fairgrounds. Gail can tell you that her numbers have been way up, and, you know, we've had a few things that's canceled out. But far as out in the open air, we've added a lot of stuff. Actually BMW, you folks, some of you in here, some of you commissioners involved with the food, y'all need to talk to them because they will be here in September. And they had their crew out there. I spent about a half a day with them out there last week. It won't be hardly like the same deal that they did when they were here in '19, but it'll be a similar, similar deal. Also was told that we're in the running for the 2023, which will be 50 years of BMW. And I'm hoping that we can get that pulled off. Anybody got any questions for me?
I get a motion to approve your report.
Move.
Second. Now discussion. Commissioner Glover?
Can you tell us anything about the fair, what you expect, or is anything in writing yet?
I've been told that I don't need to comment on Tennessee State Fair till it's 100% approved. And I was told this morning that they're expecting that to come down the first week of May. But once that comes down, then I can answer anything you want. But I think it needs to be official from Nashville before we probably go to announcing anything.
You know why I'm concerned?
Commissioner Van Aden?
Just to comment, hearing Quentin talk about the Airstream Group, I can remember, I can remember back about 12, 15 years ago when they told us, if you'd ever get an expo center built, we'll bring the national convention here. Good job.
Any other questions for Mr. Quentin? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Quentin. Mr. Quentin, Expo Center report, Ms. Gil Hibbert.
Good evening, everybody, and I will make this quick. I did put a copy on your desk tonight. It was emailed to you as well. But I also wanted to give you financial, some updated financials. That's why I gave it to you again this evening. So at the top of what I gave you, you're going to see a month-to-month comparison from year to year. And we're pretty excited over the fact that we've been able to either meet or exceed from the previous year, and that's during COVID. So to me, that means a little extra because we were able to do more in a more confined situation. And if you look at February, I was a little disappointed because I was like, oh, we came so close to 60,000. But if you look down at the cancellations, you can see COVID cancellations are still a concern. And if we had had the three big ones in February, they canceled the beginning of January, which gave me no time to fill them. Okay? So what you're looking at up here is actually what's coming up. Okay? So if we had had those three major events, we would have actually exceeded last year. So I was excited about that, and we're working to be about six months out, working with event planners. How are things going? Are you recovering through this whole process? What do we need to do to help you? And trying to educate them at the same time. Okay? So you see our numbers. They are what they are. And April is tracking to be just as successful as the previous month, so we're very excited about that. So what you see up here is a rolling screen of kind of what I have coming up that's public. Okay? Or semi-public. It kind of depends on what they are. But that's what I have on the schedule right now. I have no free weekends the rest of this year. I have four free weekends next year, and I'm already actively booking in '23, '24, and '25. And that includes bringing in new events that we've not had before or they haven't been with us for two or three years. And then, are you going to bring up the website? The one thing, I don't know if it went out. Can you, there you go. So this is a quick glance. I just wanted to bring it up on the screen. If you have not visited our brand-new website, this was created by an intern who was not paid. She did all the work for us. I was super proud of what she did. And this was with the rebranding with Farm Bureau. And the feedback that we have gotten on this from our event planners, I can now, when somebody calls me, I can say, hey, can you, can you go to farmbureauexpo.com? Let's talk through this. And there is a virtual tour that they can actually take of the entire expo center, including an overview, and see the entire grounds before they ever get to the building. And that has proven to be a great tool for us. So that's my report. Does anybody have any questions for me?
There are motion to approve the report, first.
Move.
Second. Discussion. Commissioner Van Aden?
Yes, just to comment, I think it was Dr. Wright said about the bleachers. If we had the bleachers, we could bring a lot more out there.
And I would love nothing more.
Good job. Thank you.
Commissioner Gentry?
I just want to thank you for the great work that you've done.
Oh, well, thank you. It's a team effort. I mean, it takes all of us to do our job out there, but, but thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Ms. Hibbert. Report for the Public Works Committee, Commissioner Weathers?
No report.
Ag Center Management, Commissioner Scruggs? Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Animal Control, Commissioner Marlowe?
Animal Control Committee met Thursday, April the 8th, 5:00 here in the building. The minutes are in your packet. I move they be received and filed.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Audit, Commissioner Menard? Cable Tax, Commissioner Walker?
No report.
Elephant Development Tourism, Commissioner Van Aden?
We have met twice. We met in March and we met in April, but we do not have the minutes. They will be in your packet in May.
Okay, so do you not have a report on that one? Ethics, Commissioner Ash?
No report.
Oh, they're in there.
They are?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're in there, March 8th and April 6th.
There's two of them.
We do.
I'm sorry. At our meeting, we didn't think they would be here because they had not been approved by our committee. Am I right? Okay, so I move that these be approved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay. I think we got Ethics, Commissioner Ash?
Still no report.
Got you. Ethics, Commissioner Ash? Finance, Commissioner Weathers?
No report, but we do have a meeting scheduled for this Thursday at 6:00 up here in the courthouse.
All righty. Health and Recreation, Commissioner Patton?
Health and Welfare Recreation met, but I don't see, I couldn't find the minutes in the packet. We met on the 13th for a five-hour meeting marathon, so I guess the minutes will be in the next packet.
So do I have minutes?
The day after the packet went out.
Yeah, and then we also met tonight too, so there will be two sets of minutes in the packet.
We'll get them next time. All right. Insurance, Commissioner Ash?
No report.
Judicial, Commissioner Glover?
Judicial met on Monday, March 29th, in the upstairs conference room. The minutes are in your packet. Move they be received and filed.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Would like to recognize Ms. Lisa. She is here tonight with us. Thank you for being here and putting it to, I know you put a report on our desk, so we thank you for that. Planings on, Commissioner McFarlane?
Planings on, met on March 2nd and 16th. The minutes are either in your packet or on the desk. And I move they be received and filed.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Rules, Commissioner Gentry?
No report.
Herman Type Facility Board, Commissioner Scruggs? Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Finance Director's report, Mr. Aaron Maynard.
As he comes forward, I know that he may speak on this too, but we did get a always conversation about the 28.6 million that we're getting. And we have a letter this month, this week, that we got from the Comptroller's Office. I'll send that to you tomorrow. And short version of it, when you read it, simply is going to say, hey, they approved the money. Now they're approving how they're going to spend it. And do not spend it until you get direction from them. So that's pretty much what they said and put in a separate account. And I tried to sum it up as easy as I can for you. We'll get part of it now and part of it a year later. Mr. Maynard?
And that probably, probably will not speak about that very much tonight. Again, we're awaiting regulations from Treasury. It's the Comptroller's advice and certainly mine that until Treasury issues regulations, we don't do anything. We've got two years to spend that money. Last thing in the world we want to do is get ahead of Treasury regulations, spend money that we wind up having to return to the federal government. So be patient, please. Finance reports in your packet. I don't have a lot that I need to say tonight. You know, things are trending in a positive direction. We are approaching this Friday, I believe, the 23rd is our first budget deadline for everybody to have their status quo budgets in. Hopefully, I'll be getting with the mayor sometime this week. I have a couple of things I would like to discuss with him. And then, of course, I'll bring those forward to you after that time. But the budget process so far is going good. We've been around, myself, Lebronia Horton, my deputy, and Joe Good, my assistant deputy, have been around working with various departments that have had questions about how to use the system. I will say that a very small number, I did have a conversation with a few, but a very small number of commissioners have actually logged into the system yet. So we'll be more than happy to assist you guys with that whenever you're ready. So you can see what's happening in real time as well. And that concludes my report, unless you have any questions for me.
Are you a motion to approve?
Move.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Anybody? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Report from the Budget Committee, Commissioner Marlowe?
Budget Committee met Thursday, April the 8th, here in the courthouse. Minutes are in your packet. I move they be received and filed.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolutions, Commissioner Marlowe?
Okay, Resolution 21-4-8. Okay, Resolution 21-4-8, is that the one I'm supposed to be on? To amend the budget and appropriation resolutions for the 2021 fiscal year for line item transfer to Ag Center Fund 124.
Motion to approve.
Second? Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Commissioner Fields, how do you vote? Mr. Fields votes aye. Please record. 25 and 0, resolution passes.
Resolution 21-4-9, to amend the budget and appropriation resolutions for the 2021 fiscal year to make line item transfers in county clerk, to make additional appropriations from the county clerk reserve account to county clerk.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, now any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Mr. Walker? All hearts and minds good with your vote? Mr. Fields, how do you vote?
Aye.
Aye? Please record. 25 and 0, resolution passes.
Resolution 21-4-10, to amend the budget and appropriation resolutions for the 2021 fiscal year to make an appropriation from Expo Center Fund 124 to Expo Center.
Motion to approve.
Aye.
Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Mr. Jones? Mr. Patton? All hearts and minds good with your vote? Mr. Fields, how do you vote?
Aye.
Aye? Resolution, I'm sorry, please record. 25 and 0, resolution passes.
Resolution 21-4-11, to amend the budget and appropriation resolutions for the 2021 fiscal year for line item transfers in finance.
Motion.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Please record. 25 and 0, resolution passes.
Resolution 21-412, to amend the budget and appropriation resolution for the 2021 fiscal year to make line item transfers and to make additional appropriations in Rural Debt Service Fund, number 152.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, now discussion. Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Mr. Jones? All hearts and minds good with your vote? Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Please record. 25 and 0, resolution passes.
Resolution 21-4-13, to amend the budget and appropriation resolution for the 2021 fiscal year to make line item transfers and to make additional appropriations to General Debt Service Fund 151.
Motion.
Discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Please record. 25 and 0, resolution passes.
Resolution 21-4-14, to amend the budget and appropriation resolution for the 2021 fiscal year to make an additional appropriation from the Sanitation Fund 207 to landfill.
Motion.
Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Mr. Weathers? Mr. Stafford? All hearts and minds good with your vote? Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Please record. 25 and 0, resolution passes.
Resolution 21-4-15, to amend the budget and appropriation resolutions for the 2021 fiscal year for line item transfers in general fund to Register of Deeds.
Motion. Second.
Discussion? A lot of discussion on here, no, never mind. Are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. It's messing with Ms. Jackie. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Commissioner Fields?
Aye.
Please record. 25 and 0, resolution passes.
Resolution 21-4-16, to amend the budget and appropriation resolutions for the 2021 fiscal year for line item transfers in Highway Public Works Fund, number 131.
Motion.
Got a motion and a second, discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Please record. 25 and 0, resolution passes.
Resolution 21-4-17, to amend the budget and appropriation resolution for the 2021 fiscal year to make an appropriation from Litigation Tax Courtroom Security to Sheriff's Department.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Please record. 25 and 0, resolution passes.
Resolution 21-4-18, to amend the budget and appropriation resolutions for the 2021 fiscal year for line item transfers in Sheriff's Department.
Motion.
Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Yes, sir. Commissioner Costley? All hearts and minds good with your vote? Commissioner Fields?
Aye.
Record, please. 25 and 0, resolution passes.
Resolution 21-4-19, accepting a grant from the 2021-22 litter grant program and authorizing the county mayor to execute a contract between the State Department of Transportation and Wilson County.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to hear a second, I do, any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Mr. Weathers? All hearts and minds good with your vote? Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Please record. 25 and 0, resolution passes.
And, Resolution 21-4-20, to amend the budget and appropriation resolutions for the 2021 fiscal year by approving Wilson County Board of Education General Purpose School Fund, Budget Amendment 2108.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and second, now any discussion? You'll be ready in just a second. I was going to blame it on Sarah because it's not on my list either. Ready to vote, please cast your vote. Nope, sorry.
We just did not ready.
We're on one second. Mr. Dow, are you having trouble on your line?
Yeah.
I believe you got, you just got 17 more meetings and you're done. Not that I'm counting. Don't get sick, boys vote this and that. McDonald's is getting cold.
Motion to.
We got, we got, we got all that. Can I roll?
Roll, roll.
I'll call the roll while we're doing it and you work. Commissioner Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Bannick? Mr. Franklin? Commissioner Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. McFarlane? Commissioner Rich?
Aye.
Commissioner Scruggs? Commissioner Costley?
Yes.
Mr. Patton? Commissioner Walker? Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Commissioner Ash?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones? Commissioner Dow?
Aye.
Commissioner Weathers?
Aye.
Commissioner Keith?
Aye.
Commissioner Reeves?
Aye.
Commissioner Glover?
Aye.
Commissioner Stafford?
Aye.
Commissioner Kurtz?
Aye.
Commissioner Marlowe?
Aye.
Commissioner Vanatta?
Aye.
Commissioner Bishop?
Aye.
And Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Let the record reflect, it is unanimous, 25 and 0. Any old business to come before this body? Commissioner Ash?
I know you got me, that's all right.
I did. Commissioner Ash?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I know y'all have got this on your desk and like Commissioner Vanatta, I've sent this round, thank you for your donation. Just to do like this in front of your face for a few minutes, the Wilson Warriors Foundation is attempting to build a monument over here at the museum to honor the 2nd Army, which was led into this county by George Patton and trained here, and 268 soldiers and airmen died here. So, we're working diligently to fund that project. Mr. Kurtz has come on our board, new board member, our detective board. Of course, you're supposed to be know that Jerry and Kenny and Sue and I serve on the board. So, we're asking y'all to try to help us find some host sponsors and get a golf team together. And I'll bring this up again in May since I missed you on the front end, so just as a reminder, thank you.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Vanatta?
Yes, and I just want to say, I have already tonight sold one host sponsorship. Thank you, Mr. Bernard, for buying that, and I can sell all of you one, just kind of see me.
That's a challenge.
That's a challenge, I'll accept the challenge, we'll put a team in it, Commissioner Ash.
That sounds better.
Yes, sir. Any other old business to come before this body? Any new business? I need one more motion.